Okay, it is four o'clock, so I'll call to order the second monthly meeting of the Hendersonville City Council, July 27th, 2022. Okay, just start in with our presentations.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Volk, members of city council, we have three presentations, I think, definitely two, maybe three. But we'll start with the Patton Park amenity options. I mean, I asked Mark Stillwaltz to stand up, but we had this discussion as we related to as we're looking at relocating the tennis courts from Boyd Court, Boyd Park to Patton Park, and we asked Mark and Public Works to give us some options because we also know that, you know, while tennis is popular, pickleball is gaining in much more popularity. So Mark has done a lot of work over the last month or so, looking at potential options as it relates to tennis courts and pickleball courts at Patton Park. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. You know, pickleball is just, it's on fire right now. You can see, this is a fact sheet from the U.S. Pickleball Association. There's about five million players in the United States currently. It's growing about 15 to 20% a year, year over year, and it's also dropping in age. Originally, it seems like the retirees really bought into it and got really competitive with it, but just last year, the median age dropped almost three years. So it's coming down, and now when you go to our tennis courts, what we primarily see are pickleball players, especially in Patton Park. And so I think it's a kind of a wave that's growing and getting bigger. You can see on the upper corner up here, this is the racquetball court that we took down. That's a grassy field now, and we had a survey done. We had planned on bringing in two more tennis courts with some pickleball overlays originally. However, the lot was not wide enough. It was only 100 feet wide. In the minimum size, you can have for two courts, regulation courts is 109 feet. So we were just a little, trying to fit too much in too small of a place. The more we kind of went down the rabbit hole of just looking at our site and evaluating, we realized that the tennis courts and the basketball courts both have approximately 500 feet of cracks in the asphalt. Those have already been repaired once. You know, it's pretty expensive to repair them, but at this point, the cracks have come back, they've started growing again. In far as the quality of play on those courts, you start to develop dead spots, you start having, you know, competitive play, and then it hits a crack, and, you know, everyone's unhappy. So we are unfortunately looking at having to not just build a court, we're going to have to redo the other two courts at some point. So it's a matter of how we go about that. The first option is if we were going to just repair the other courts and put in kind of what will fit on that site, it is possible to put in two dedicated pickleball courts and one full-time tennis court, and we could put one, possibly two more pickleball courts overlapping the tennis court. This is going to be probably the least expensive option, but it's also kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit. And frankly, I don't know that it's really going to meet the needs of the pickleball community. They're really looking for a place to call home, they're looking for a place to host tournaments. You know, there's a group out there, you know, five days a week in the mornings, they usually play from eight to 10 before it gets too hot, but they, if you ever would like some feedback, they would be happy to talk to you at length. But yes, they're really looking for a place to congregate. And I don't know if you've been following the news at all, but I think three or four weeks ago, it was the front page of the Citizen Times, talking about the controversy between the tennis community and the pickleball community. And unfortunately, it's kind of getting ugly. Tennis players feel entitled that this is our place to recreate, and the pickleballers are like, you know, this doesn't really fit us, but we have rights to, so we're really looking to alleviate some of that strain. So again, this would be kind of the minimal approach, just refurbishing the other courts. If we did want to just try to fix the cracks, again, we're talking about $30,000 to resurface them, fill the cracks, and that would last us probably two to four years at most. I believe the tennis court was done about five years ago, and the tennis courts alone have over 350 feet of cracks in them. You know, you can cover them up, but they come back, is what happens. Option two, we could squeeze six pickleball courts into either one of these sites if we went with dedicated pickleball sites, meaning permanent nets that were set up. We also have the option of bringing in temporary nets. That kind of feeds back into that animosity between the tennis crowd and the pickleball crowd, because, you know, the pickleballers want to leave them out, the tennis folks are like, oh, you left your net on our court, you know, so anyway. So I don't really advise this one, but this does give us the options, or just shows the options of two six-court setups. I also don't know that this is the best idea, just from a logistical standpoint with parking, you know? And so the third option we came up with is if we were to take the basketball courts over here and turn that into an eight-court complex. That allows for parking right beside the skate park, it allows for some overflow to the pavilion we have, to kind of get folks into the shade when they're not on the court itself. And then what we would do is where the existing racquetball court is, or was, we could turn that into a basketball court. We currently only have four goals in Patton Park, but we could turn that into a six-goal, possibly even an eight-goal, kind of primarily basketball, multi-use surface. We could, and it shows that you can fit three pickleball courts on a basketball court, they would not be highlighted so much, but those would be the possibility for like temporary nets, portable nets. So if there was a tournament or something like that, it would give them the ability to add, you know, another three courts there, and then on the tennis courts, a minimum of two more, if not four to six more, from a temporary perspective. So for this to occur, all, we would have to completely refinish and demolish the two courts, more or less, we'd have to pull up all the asphalt, add some more gravel down, and then, you know, repave it, resurface it, put up additional fencing and things like that. So, you know, currently, well, these are some, just some of the different configurations that you can do. The one in the upper right-hand corner, that's kind of what four pickleball courts can take up the same space as a single tennis court, you know, from a regulation perspective. You know, it shows what you can do on a normal basketball court. Our tennis courts that we currently have are not a 120 by 120 pad, they're 109, so we could only fit six on there. And so the lower middle picture just shows kind of what we have currently, or the ability to do currently. And then the last one kind of shows what a 120 by 120 pad would look like, and that's currently what the basketball court is, is 120 by 120. I don't know if you remember the first picture, we have two full basketball courts on there, but we also have probably a quarter or a third of that court that's not used by the basketball goals, that's just kind of extra space, that's not really much of an advantage, Lastly, you know, we do have the option to really kind of knock it out of the park per se, and add a covered court. You know, a covered court really does have some benefits. The pickleball community has been very clear that this is what they desire, you know, it's also, you know, double the price tag. A covered court, this is, this style, it's called a Clearspan Trust System, the roof has about a 20-year guarantee on it, it's about a 25-year lifespan for the roof, it does have light inside, keeps it dry, you know, but largely it's providing shade and just, you know, opening up the courts for when it's raining, so. And that's going to come in at about $500,000. It's also, we would save a fair amount of money as well if we were to build the roof first, because what you don't want to necessarily do is go in and refinish all these courts and put all the money into it, and then have to build a structure over it, it gets much more complicated, so. So the cost breakdown essentially is, these are the different costs associated with refurbishing a court, taking it down, starting all over, and building it back. This also doesn't include if the staff were to do some of the work, you know, we can, you know, pay an asphalt company to come in, mill that, haul it off. That's something, that might be a way that our staff could save some money, too. We could go in and just remove the asphalt ourselves, we don't have to pay tipping fees for that, we could dump that for free. You'll see also, it says fence and lights, we do, we will have some leftover from Boyd Park, that we'll reuse those, it's relatively new, but it's a, it'd be a partial saving. So I'm pretty confident we could come in below that number, but I think we should budget 150 per court. Currently, we have about $250,000 in grants available, that's in our account and ready to go. But, you know, if you put in roughly 150 per court, that would also include some small sidewalk improvements and things like that, like along the swimming pool, for instance, to get back there. So we were, we would be short, we're currently short about, if we were to go with this larger plan with about 200,000. If we were to go with a covered court, then we would need about 700,000. Some possible options for that, too, would be if we did go after a part-of grant, you know, those are, I believe, a 50-50 match up to about 500,000, but it is competitive, and I know, I believe our engineering department has some, might have another grant for Greenways already kind of in the queue, so. So can I answer any questions?
Is that to cover, like if we did eight of them, it would cover all eight of them, or it would only cover one of them?
So be, 150,000 would pay to refurbish the court and do like, any one of those courts would cost around 150,000. So that would be all, that would be eight courts, like if we did this picture with the, with the eight-court setup, that would be 150.
What about the 500,000, like for the, to cover?
So that's an independent 500,000 on top.
That would cover eight courts, is that what?
That would cover, yes, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood you, yes.
It's okay.
There is also, I should note, there's also room at this location that we could even expand that to 12 courts.
What does the facility in, is it Alabama? How many courts do they have there?
Opelika, they had 12 courts that they put undercover, and it was far more successful than anyone ever imagined, to the point that they built it, and I think within like two or three years, they ended up building an entire another facility next to it with an additional 12 courts. They're bringing in tournaments, they're having people come from all over the country, and, you know, the Parks and Rec Department feels like it has more than paid for itself, so.
So when I served on the Parks and Rec Board, we heard pickleball all the time, like, and I completely understand the division between tennis and pickleball, because the pickleballers feel like they're a legitimized sport, and they're actually the fastest growing sport in America, and are not even getting their own courts, and they're having to use like disposable or movable nets. And so I know that the county commissioners have also recently heard a lot of pickleball requests as well. I wonder, is there a way that we could work with them, or work with a partner to make this happen? Because I, to me, the covered court, like covered courts are the only way to go, because we're increasing our season and increasing the availability of play, and I'm telling you, the pickleballers travel from all over the place to play, and there are not any accessible pickleball courts like this that I know of in North Carolina, like the closest big one is in Alabama. So it would just be, to me, a win for the community to have this available, but also to be able to bring in more tournament play, and, you know, which then yields that passive income, too, for the community, so.
How we would structure that with the county, I can't answer. But it absolutely, if we had a dedicated pickleball facility, I know that it would really free up the tennis courts quite a bit at Jackson Park. And I know particularly in the afternoons, there's a lot of sports teams and tennis camps and things like that, and there is that kind of competition going on, so you have to reserve them. One note about the cover, covered option, is that according to our local pickleballers, the Mills River site, which does have some pickleball courts, or tennis courts, is a very windy site, as is the Jackson Park site, and due to the winds, I guess pickleball is, they're lighter balls, it's like a wiffle ball, but they're much more affected by the wind. So that was a big deal for them about the cover, is just reducing the wind would be a big bonus, but also the options that they have for public pickleball play are just really poor sites in general due to the wind pattern in those areas.
Does pickleball require a special kind of covering?
No, I mean, it could be any type of roof structure. You know, we do have one set of courts in Sullivan that's covered, that would be much more expensive, it's also a more substantial structure, and that style of court is, it has very high ceilings and open walls, so they do like for them to kind of wrap around and be a little lower, just to let less wind through, so.
I mean, I tend to agree with Jen, that if we're going to do it, we should do it right. And it doesn't make any sense to put down a court that we're going to rip up to put a roof on eventually.
And do you remember, I remember them discussing, so like, I know when they resurfaced, the county resurfaced the courts at Jackson Park, there's like a lifespan on the resurfacing as well, so like you can do it so many times, and then you just can't do it anymore?
We're at that point.
Okay, yeah.
Right. And so essentially, it's about $20 a linear foot to fix the cracks, and essentially they fill them, and they put a special tape on it, and then they resurface it. And if you look at our basketball court, you can see where those tape marks are perfectly linear, and there's a giant crack that shoots out of them another 20 or 30 feet. So you kind of get one or two of those options, but we've already used them, essentially. I think, I think the tennis court was done around five years ago, and I believe the basketball court was maybe three years ago. The other thing is with the way gas prices have gone, it's directly tied to asphalt and to gravel, so it is one of those things, the longer we wait, there's a good chance that it will, the prices will only go up, so.
So the goal today was to give you something to think about, and since Councilman Smith is not here, and he is supportive of pickleball also, since he's now playing, so he is planning to participate via Zoom next week. So our intention was to give you information, let you think about it, also inform the public of this discussion, so that's, because this did start out as relocating of tennis courts from Boyd, and now moving to shift it to more of a pickleball model, so we would, this item is on your agenda for August the 4th, for next Thursday, for you to take action and give direction, so. So we thought we would wait a week and, before you made final decisions, so that everybody could participate. Or if you need more information, we can gather that, too.
Yeah, I think we do need to keep the tennis courts. I don't think we should eliminate those totally, and the basketball courts. I see people playing basketball there every time I go, practically every time I go through the park. So those are very popular, just with families and kids and teens and everything, so.
Yeah, I think that's what's.
We can improve that, that would be.
So Mayor, are you okay, the question, and again, we can, you can think about it, one of the options was to relocate the basketball courts, as long as we keep the basketball courts?
As long as there are basketball courts there, yeah.
Well, these would be better, basketball courts.
It should be, it would be a nicer facility, there'd be fencing, there'd be lighting, there'd be access from 25 and also from, from the interior of the park.
Because right now, after it rains, one of them is covered with water.
Mm-hmm.
For next week, you said there was an option that we could fit 12 pickleball courts in that area, can we see that next week, too?
Sure, I mean, essentially, you're just going to add another row.
But again, think about a structure in the middle of Patton Park.
This is true, but I just want to see it. I just want to see what the footprint looks like. Real quick, copy paste it.
I understand, I understand, easy enough. So will Jerry be back?
Yeah, he'll be participating next Thursday night, so.
Okay, okay, great.
And also, this gives opportunity for the public to understand what we're talking about and provide any reaction or support, so, be very transparent.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I think there are going to be a lot of happy people around hearing that there is potential to be some legitimate pickleball courts.
Who knew that there was such a feud with pickleball?
It is, it is a thing.
I mean.
See, Debbie's in on pickleball.
So, very good. So at this point, I believe Lou Holloway is participating via Zoom. We have our friendly COVID visiting our community development department, so Lou is participating. Lou, I'm going to turn this over to you, to see if you obtained any information related to code enforcement update, and I definitely know that you have information about the comprehensive plan, so I'll turn those two items over to you to take it away.
Okay, great, thank you, John. I assume everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, good deal. Good, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I do have a little overview of code enforcement update. Stephen has been working very hard, and let's see if I can, can I share screen just for, I'm going to stop someone else's screen share here, I think, let's see if we can do this. Are you all seeing a state of code enforcement document?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I know this is a Word document, I apologize for that aspect of it, but I just wanted to have a little something to go by. One of the primary pieces that I would want council to be aware of, that Stephen's been working on, is related to the use of CityWorks. CityWorks is a software program that we have in the water sewer department that they use to do a variety of things. To be perfectly honest, I'm not sure what they all use it for, but Stephen had familiarity with this software program and kind of used that knowledge to set up a code enforcement tracking system within CityWorks. And what that does, or it's, CityWorks is basically a database that's GIS-connected. So what it allows us to do is to, when we have a code enforcement action of one sort or another, we can create a record of that action and attach it to the PIN, the property that it's associated with, within CityWorks. And then that property and all of the records associated with the action stay in there, and you can attach anything. He's got voicemails and emails and mailed letters and things like that, that are attached to these records. So it has, you know, allowed for data transparency at a level that we previously hadn't had, kind of internally within the department, and some of the information that I'm going to share here is kind of a reflection of that. So just real quick, Stephen would go over a lot more of this, but I'm going to go over at a relatively high level and a relatively quick pace, and then see if y'all have any questions, but this is a reflection of the work that is in CityWorks and reflects code enforcement service requests that we've had. The first two numbers you'll see, that we've responded to 42 service requests and conducted 152 investigations. Those are up to July 5th. I don't, I wasn't able to get newer updated numbers from Stephen, but that reflects calls we've received, and then Stephen's, the trips out to investigate, that would involve, you know, an initial investigation, and then if there is a notice of violation, it would involve any kind of follow-up actions. And so then you can see that from those investigations, we've issued 61 enforcements, and that is reflective of our work primarily being complaint-driven, but there has been some proactive enforcement, I would say primarily in situations where we get a service request and there is identified in the same area, other violations of a similar sort, and so we're, you know, making sure that we're applying that, whether it's a nuisance abatement or a junk vehicle, we're applying that ordinance standard equally. And you can see, some of those have been updated, so the last three have been updated with numbers from July 27, up to July 27. So we've issued 68 actions, and we have resolved 47 of those and have 21 outstanding. The pie chart below is the numbers from July 5th, so those totals haven't been updated, but are a pretty good reflection of kind of the distribution of issues that we have. The, you know, the largest by far being tall grass, we have done a lot of junked car enforcements lately. I think that's in part a, just a reflection of that kind of building up over time. The, I don't know that that junk car enforcement will continue to play as large of a percentage of enforcement actions as it, as it has been. A good number of those have been resolved in one way or another. And then the sort of third-place actor there is enumeration, which is typically trash or junk, and then minimum housing condemnation and illegal use, which would be a zoning enforcement. The other primary activity that Stephen's been involved in was identifying vacant and/or burned homes within the city. One of the first things, and this is also data that's been built into CityWorks, and I'll talk in a moment for about a couple of the reasons why we're doing this, but the first reason was driven by conversations with the fire department and basically a review of where have they answered fire calls and have all of those homes, do we know the condition of all of those homes? And part of that came from coming across the burned home in the city that was vacant that had burned a period of time ago and hadn't been repaired or rehabbed or otherwise addressed. And so wanting to, you know, make sure that that communication channel was open, we requested from fire department their, their home structure fire list and started doing kind of an assessment of the condition of those folks, those homes that have had a fire service call, and then beyond that, have also been identifying as we find them vacant or abandoned properties within the city. And just making note that that is, as we understand it, a vacant or abandoned property, and confirming that typically by speaking with water sewer and seeing if there was water service at the property. Now, the reason for doing this is primarily so that we have an understanding of where vacant and abandoned homes are, and, you know, recognizing that those homes are homes that have the potential, not guaranteed by any means that they would, but have the potential to deteriorate over time. And also, because we would love to see vacant and abandoned homes not be vacant any longer. So that, that is earlier on in the process. I actually think that that number is higher than 29 now, I want to say that we're, we're in the mid-30s, and with each house, we're doing a, basically, from the outside, from the right-of-way, an initial assessment of the condition of the home, and that green, yellow, red, and black and blue condition is reflective of the language that's in the state statutes around minimum housing ordinances and minimum housing code for North Carolina. So that's a quick overview of what Stephen has been working on. We have been discussing sort of a variety of other efforts at, hold on a sec here, I'm lost on my mouse, a variety of other ways of using CityWorks, and think that that may have some. And think that that may have some really good uses for the department. Because the water sewer department already owns the software or otherwise pays for it. It hasn't been a cost for us. We've just been able to work with Jeremy Pass, who's been really fabulous on implementing some of those tools for our work. So I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any questions about any of that or.
I have a question or two. Are we obtaining data on like who actually owns those homes? And then are we contacting the owners as far as like where they are and whatever? Is there an insurance process that they have to go through? Are they interested in maintaining the property? Or are these, you know, I think we've kind of expressed like the desire to have infill development for affordable housing projects. And so I guess like what would be the next step? Or like, are you guys already doing that? I'm assuming you probably are, and I just don't know about it, but.
Well, so we haven't, that would be a next step. Councilwoman Hensley, we have not taken that step to date. But we, as a component of identifying the properties at this point, had just been really putting this list together and making sure that we understood what tools we had. A lot of these have really difficult owner identification challenges. Like there are reasons why they're vacant and abandoned, right? We've run across a few in this process where the owner has passed on and there's no clear line of title and we're not even sure who owns the property. So the process for having some of those conversations and taking it to that level is starting with this overall identification. But I do believe that it is our intent then to, you know, start to make connections with folks and, you know, see if there are, you know, intentions to do anything with the homes or if it's in, sometimes these are in some sort of family trust type thing or whatnot. So no cohesive or comprehensive effort to reach out to property owners to date, but that is what we are working towards.
And Lou, I'm correct, at some point in the future, some of these homes would require formal action by the city council to condemn, declare them a nuisance, those kind of things. So ultimately, some of them at a future time could end up on the city council agenda to take formal action.
Yeah, that's correct. So one of the reasons that we want to understand the condition and, you know, the nature of this element of our community is so that we can then, when we're coming to council in the future, with minimum housing, if we were to take action to order to repair a red condition or, well, it would most likely happen with a red condition home, that would have to come before council. Staff can't issue that order. And so, you know, one of our goals is to understand, you know, just where these homes are, what kind of condition they're in, which ones, you know, it's like anything. It's on a bell curve and some are in better shape than others and some are more challenging than others. So, but yes, John, the short answer to that question is for, in our code, the City of Hendersonville Code of Ordinances, our minimum housing code, when it comes to taking formal action to order a repair or a demolition or something like that, it does require city council to authorize that.
Do these numbers include commercial properties too or just residential properties?
These are just residential. We do, we are also keeping track of which commercial property. We do, so our vacant and burned property list includes both commercial and residential. Our abandoned and vacant residential property list is a little bit more broader in terms of the condition that it's addressing. So we're not looking at vacant commercial properties. But we are trying to identify that through residential. Did that answer make sense?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Lou, thanks. Again, just want to give a council an update. Know that, speaking with many of you or all of you individually, that code enforcement is a priority. And so as we grow this program, something that I know community development is working hard to do and we're getting started. And so it'll continue to grow as we go forward. But wanted to give you an update at this point.
Yeah, and I would just say, last thing I would say is thanks to Legal for their assistance in all of this. And also to our police department and fire department for all the work that they've done. This one is definitely kind of a team effort in terms of everyone kind of having some role in getting code enforcement where I think we would like for it to be. So since I'm still up here, I'll switch gears, John, and switch to the comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir.
Are you seeing a comp plan RFP presentation?
Negative.
No, we're not. We're seeing the, there we go, I think. There we go, Lou.
Okay, all right. Okay, so just want to update on the status of the comp plan RFP. I'm excited to say that we are very, very close to getting this out the door. And just kind of go over that RFP, what's in it and what we are targeting in terms of requesting assistance from consultants. So. There we go. All right. So just real quick overview for everyone who may be tuning in. Comprehensive plan is a visionary document. It sets forth goals, policies, and programs, which are, really can touch on any number of things for the community. Economic development, resource protection, infrastructure development. The North Carolina General Statute establishes that to have zoning, you have to have a comprehensive plan and that they should be adopted with the advice and consultation of the planning board. The planning board's actually seen a similar presentation from staff on what's in the comprehensive plan RFP. So they're also familiar with it. The comprehensive plan importantly, and I'm going to touch on this a little later on when we talk about some of the things that we're asking for in the document, is advisory in nature without independent regulatory effect. So the comp plan is not the law. It is the guidance. And the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance are the law. And the two really need to work together. The comp plan has to be considered by the planning board and the governing board when considering amendments to zoning regulations. But the zoning regulations are really then what drive what development looks like. So that's really important to remember. In terms of what the process for the revision will be and what the RFP requests from consultants in their proposal, the first is, and I'm sorry for the clip art, but the first major piece is public engagement. You know, a conversation with the community about the community vision is an essential component of the effort to revise the comprehensive plan. And we're really looking for the consultant to provide a public participation approach, which includes methods for reaching all of our community, geographically, economically, culturally diverse citizen residents, including our minority populations. We're looking for a public participation approach that has a section that recognizes that we've got neighborhoods and districts. And I'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. But really looks at, you know, how are we reaching the various neighborhoods that are part of the city? We've got an interest in ArcGIS story maps and other online engagement platforms. So we're looking for them to have digital capacity. And we really want creative ideas in terms of how we would go about getting the community to be involved in this process. Staff will be available to assist in the public engagement process, but we're really looking for the consultant to play a lead role in kind of helping us get that where we want it to be. And then the second sort of major component is to develop the plan content for our 2045 comprehensive plan. The 2030 comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2009 and has seven actionable sections, which I'm going to breeze through the next couple of slides pretty quickly. It talks about each of the sections. Is going to serve as a solid foundation. And we're expecting that the consultant's going to review that plan and in concert with staff and the council and planning board and the community, identify those elements of the plan that, you know, have been achieved, maybe are no longer relevant or that perhaps need new ideas to be accomplished. But that those seven chapters, which you can see here, population and housing, natural environmental resources, cultural and historic resources, community facilities, water resources, transportation. All of those things are still very relevant to the community and still going to be a significant part of what we imagine will be guidance in the way of goals, strategies, and actions within the updated comprehensive plan. So just to go kind of quickly through those, you know, each of the chapters has goals, strategies, and actions associated with them. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, in some of these cases, the action items, we've done them. Or in some cases, they haven't been achieved yet. Or in some cases, they may no longer be relevant. And we want to revisit those and think about how they should be integrated into the 2045 plan. So, you know, you're going to see a lot that you're going to say, yeah, of course, we still want to do that. We still want to promote safe and walkable neighborhoods. And even in 2009, we were talking about matching housing supply with local workforce and promoting diverse neighborhoods. So, you know, how have the action plans that we have put in place and perhaps the ones that we need to put in place changed or need to change? Same thing, natural resources and natural and environmental resources. You see some of the goals there. There's a variety of strategies. Cultural and historic resources had four primary goals and 17 strategies. I'm not going to read each one of these. I'm happy to come back to any of these if we need to. I'll note, you know, this one included promoting downtown as Hendersonville's central gathering place. You know, so what's the updated, we've been doing that, right? What are some of the updated strategies and action items for something like that? Community facilities had a lot, seven primary goals and a variety of strategies for doing so. I'm flipping through quickly just to get to sort of my next section. Land use and development, I'll say that of the seven chapters, this is the one that you most often hear us talking about in rezonings. Because this is the chapter that is inclusive of the future land use map. And so when we then look at what an area within the city was envisioned for moving forward, we're looking at that future land use map designation and looking to this chapter. And this chapter specifically references how its intention is to sort of capture the guidance that's elsewhere in the comprehensive plan and, you know, put it into the future land use map and put it into a proposed vision for the future of the city. And so this will be an important one that we will likely see, you know, some pretty significant changes to depending on where the community outreach process goes and in terms of folks giving us feedback about where they want to see things happening and what kind of development they want to see happening. So two of the components that staff and the planning board discussed that we felt were not as well addressed or could be addressed more effectively in a new comprehensive plan were these two. And I'll talk first about districts and neighborhoods. So the existing 2030 comprehensive plan does a good job of identifying broad goals for the community overall. But it does not address a more nuanced neighborhood or commercial district level vision in a particularly compelling way. And then a goal for creating the 2045 comprehensive plan will be to develop, and this perhaps is as an enhancement to the future land use and development chapter, or perhaps as a standalone section, a targeted vision of how broad goals of the comprehensive plan would apply to specific commercial districts and at a neighborhood level. You know, Hendersonville, like many cities, is a collection of neighborhoods and commercial districts. And a lot of them have unique character. And so how does our vision for the community apply at the district and neighborhood level? And we've seen this accomplished in a variety of comprehensive plans that we've reviewed in the lead up to, you know, pushing to get this RFP out. And so we think this has a lot of potential to both be a way to engage communities at that neighborhood level, but also to sort of, you know, provide a little bit more specific indication of vision within the districts and within the neighborhoods. The second chapter that the RFP requests would be added would be an economic and community development chapter. There is no chapter dedicated to a vision for the community's economic well-being in the 2030 comprehensive plan. And we would really like to see the 2445 plan take this on directly by including goals, strategies, and action items for land use that will help us move the city into an active role in facilitating economic development. And so we believe this is going to include an overview of what drives our local economy today and what can facilitate the health and growth of that economy moving forward. You know, of note, in this chapter, we think our historic downtown area, housing availability, the Acusta rail trail corridor, our medical district area entrance corridors, and some of the burgeoning industrial sites within our jurisdiction would be included in this chapter or would be elements that might be addressed in this chapter. And then the curve ball that I'm throwing the consultants or that the planning board in concert with staff are throwing the consultants are a series of ad alternates, basically elements that we are asking the consultants to provide a proposal for that we may add into or may not. The first one, I'll note that we did receive a $50,000 grant from the Tourism Development Authority, the Henderson County Visitor Center to facilitate. And so we do feel excited and good about being able to pursue that at some level as a component of this project. And that really is looking at a more robust level of detail for our historic downtown area. area to include Main Street and Seventh Avenue, specifically our municipal service districts. The second one that we have in there is we note comprehensive transportation plan. The future land use map currently designates corridors around the city, minor, major thoroughfare, boulevard, you know, local streets, so on and so forth. But it doesn't go beyond that in terms of perhaps suggesting improvements along those corridors, integrating what DOT has on the books, suggesting what road profiles might look like, creating some design standards, or even creating some design goals. And the comprehensive transportation plan would take on some of those elements. That's a big bite. But while we were in the process of getting this RFP out, the nature of the planning that takes place around corridors as a part of the comprehensive plan really made a lot of sense to consider that transportation plan as a potential. Consultants will not have to propose to do this, to be eligible for review and for, you know, participating in our 2045 comprehensive plan rewrite. But our thought process is that we can ask for it and begin to understand, you know, how the consulting industry is looking at this type of work and perhaps even get some creative suggestions for how to address that. And then the third one is the zoning ordinance revision. And this, I'll loop back to the very first slide, you know, in kind of talking about why we've included this. The comprehensive plan will create a vision for the community, but the zoning ordinance is what the staff overhearing community development use to tell the developer how they can meet that vision. And so if the zoning ordinance and the zoning map and the guidelines within our zoning ordinance don't achieve the kind of development that our comprehensive plan calls for, we're not making the connection there. And so I know that a zoning, a variety of zoning ordinance revisions and likely zoning map amendments will be warranted following the comprehensive plan revision. And this would give us the opportunity to kind of plug those two together and/or understand a little bit about what that is going to look like. So... The timeline for the RFP and getting this information out is hopefully relatively right at the door here. We're hoping to release the RFQ August 1st next week. We're working through the final steps with finance and legal to get approval for the RFP as it's written. And then you can see there our, you know, proposal window where potential consultants would have the opportunity to review and develop their proposal. And then we foresee staff reviewing the submittals in September with an anticipated award date at your October city council meeting. And then implementation, you know, following a contract finalization with the consultant that's awarded the project, implementation of the project would be between eight to 12 months. And that is, that is what I have for an update. I know this was perhaps a long time coming in terms of getting this RFP out for the comprehensive plan update. I know our team is excited to be at this point and hopeful to get some good responses. And I'm able to hopefully answer any questions that y'all may have about that RFP or the comprehensive plan process generally.
Questions?
So I'll just say the goal of this presentation was simply, you know, this is such a critical part of helping y'all make decisions. We wanted you to know where we were, what we were asking the consultants to do. And we'll keep checking in as we go through this process because this does drive what happens in this room, you know, the first Thursday of every month as it relates to items. So we just wanted to check in with you, let you know what we're doing, keep you informed. So if there were questions or concerns tonight or in the future, we'll be glad to answer them or get you information soon. But I think that's all we have.
No final questions? Thank you, Lou, for covering that. We do appreciate both those presentations. Let us know where staff is on those sorts of things. Okay, we are at the end of our agenda. We are adjourned.